All right, at this time I'd like to call to order the meeting of Preston County Commission. Today is April 11th, 2023 at 9:30 and we will begin with the public's address.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show that all three commissioners are present. Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Thomas, Commissioner Stone, and I almost did say Commissioner Rex.
Oh, you're all good, okay.
All right, we will go ahead. Is there anyone from the public to be recognized that is not on the agenda today?
Nope.
All right, and take a review of the bills.
At this time, I would like to move that we approve the bills that have been properly presented and reviewed.
It's been properly moved and seconded to pay bills. They've been properly presented and approved. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes. Tax correction list, we have our assessor with a few things today.
How are you doing?
Pardon?
How are you doing?
I'm doing well, how about you?
Okay.
Good. Um, we have a couple clerical errors or a clerical error and a taxpayer error. Two term, two taxpayer, sorry. Um, the amount of $618.24.
At this time, I would like to move that we approve the tax correction list as it has been presented.
Um, I would like to second that.
Been properly moved and seconded to approve the tax correction list as it has been presented by our assessor in the amount of $618.24. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes. All right, we will move along. Uh, our 9:30 appointment is Miss Lisa Leishman with Budget Revision. Good morning, Lisa.
Good morning. Yeah, for my budget revision, I would like to move $2,000 out of my overtime line item into my line item for postage.
Okay.
Because at this time I have $800 left in the postage.
Yeah, during, during budgeting, you said that you were very low on postage. You don't think your need, you don't anticipate that your need at Evertown in your budget.
Still okay, I'm still okay with that. Even if I moved the $2,000, I'm still okay on the overtime line item.
Perfect. Is there any other budget revisions today? I didn't think so.
Okay, well, at this time, I would like to approve the budget revision for Lisa Leishman, the Circuit Clerk, in the amount of $2,000 from Evertown to postage.
I'll say.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the budget revision for the Circuit Clerk in the amount of $2,000. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much, have a nice day.
You too. All right, we've been right along. Next up, we have our 9:33 appointment. We have Miss Stacy Greaser, victim advocate, with a National Crime Victims Rights Week proclamation. And, first of all, we still have to do.
Oh, well, we, you checked it.
Oh, you checked it, so this is a correct, okay, so make sure we sign.
Well, they're all correct. They fixed all of them.
All right, perfect.
I see each users would look better.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. All right, are you gonna read this or do you want to read it?
I mean, I thought Dawn read the one last week, so I guess I could.
We were just spoiled with the voice of Preston County, he always does it.
Yeah, I don't have that pressure of your voice. Smoke some more cigarettes.
Yes, I smoked a lot, Dawn. Oh, you gave it up. But, uh, we can go ahead and do this if you, if you wanna read it, Hunter.
Okay. Proclamation, Preston County Commission. Whereas Americans are the victims of more than 26 million crimes each year, crime can touch the lives of anyone regardless of age, national origin, race, creed, religion, gender, sexual orientation, immigration, or economic status. And whereas crime can leave a lasting fiscal, emotional, or financial impact on people of all ages and abilities and of all economic, racial, and social backgrounds, and whereas the entire community has to play a role. Whereas incorporating communities, existing experts, and trusted sources of support into efforts to fully service survivors will develop a criminal justice system response that is truly accessible and appropriate for all victims of crime. Whereas with the full weight of their community and victim service providers behind them, survivors will feel empowered to face their grief, loss, fear, anger, and shame without fear of judgment and will feel understood and worthy of support. Whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week, April 23rd through 29th, 2023, is an opportune time to commit to ensuring that all victims of crime, even those who are challenging to reach or serve, yeah, or serve are offered critically and, um, lingerish.
Linguistically.
Linguishly, oh my, my apologies, the linguist is.
Linguistically.
Linge, I, my apologies, I'm just not getting that today. Accessible and appropriate services in the aftermath of the crime. And whereas Preston County Victim Advocate's, Advocate requests the Preston County Commission recognize April 23rd, 2023 through April 29th, 2023 as National Crime Victims Rights Week. And whereas the Office of the Preston County Prosecuting Attorney and the Preston County Victim Advocate ask that public support and assistance continue not only this week but throughout the year as these offices join with RD, VIC, other Preston County officials and supporters as they continue to work towards a society where all women and men have the right to live in a peace free from violence and exploitation. And now therefore we, as the Preston County Commission, do hereby proclaim the week of April 23rd, 2023 through April 29th, 2023 as National Victims Rights Week. And, do we read the bottom part? And reaffirm this county's commitment to creating a victim service and criminal justice response that assists all victims of crime during Crime Victims Rights Week and throughout the year. And we recognize the rights of all victims are guaranteed and we pledge our continued support in Preston County and we are commended, we are commended this proclamation to all citizens. And testimony thereof, we have here on to set our hands and causes still of the Preston County, of the County of Preston to be affixed this 11th day, April, in the year 2023.
All right, I have a motion to proclaim April 23rd through the 29th as National Crime Victims Rights Week.
At this time, I would like to proclaim the week of April 23rd through 29th, 2023 as National Crime Victims Week, Rights Week.
You can say, I'll make a motion to proclaim the city proclaim.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm due to proclaim.
There we go. I was seconded.
Sorry about that, Kelly.
He just read a lot of words.
I didn't, I didn't.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded to proclaim April 23rd through the 29th, 2023 as National Crime Victims Rights Week. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
You have the good copy?
Yep, I do, and thank you for reading that.
Yeah, I figured Dawn took one for routine last week. It needs to be here, is that a little bit?
Is everyone else as long as that one? Not all of them, none of them are as long.
They're very, that's, I mean, it's about average.
It's average, yeah. No, it's fine.
And it's, I don't.
Yeah, thank you for correcting that. Joe actually corrected the, the day price thing.
Well, I read it, everyone asked me, and I'm like, does it already happen? She said, well, I emailed it, and I'm like, well, does it get corrected, copy that?
Okay, well, that, that works.
Thank you. Do you still have to? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next up, we have the minutes.
I'll say we could sign another one instead of making a copy.
Um, that's okay.
At this time, I would like to approve the minutes for March 14th, 2023 and March 21st, 2023.
I will say.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the minutes for March 14th, 2023, March 21st, 2023. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes. Stacy?
At this time, I would like to approve the state settlement list for March 22nd, 2023, for March 22nd, 2023, for Jesse A. Jennings.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the state settlement list, um, March 22nd through March 22nd, 2023, for Jesse A. Jennings. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes. PIBs.
At this time, I would like to maybe dispense with the reading of the PIBs and assess them directly from March 30th through April 5th.
Are we going to start that motion?
It's been properly moved and seconded to dispense with the readings of proceedings in vacation and enter them into record and open court session for March 30th through April 5th, 2023. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes. Nothing under the fiduciary commissioner report brings us to our whole business with, um, first off, do we have anything for EMS ordinance discussion?
Okay, so, um, EMS ordinance discussion. We are still working with Morgan County. Kathy's working on in Tutan, the actual service agreement to work through. Um, it's been a lot harder to find than what one would anticipate. It's, um, it's been a struggle. So we have that service agreement and, um, right now I know we're overran um, with other stuff, so we're just continuing to work on the matters and then maybe have a work session later on.
All right, anything, um, for the PSD, who are Board of Directors, they can see? I believe we do.
Just to let you know that you did receive a letter of interest from Mike Rupenbaum. Um, I am told that he has the board's support and they will make that done.
If it's a gentleman I know who's an actor who did get us.
Um, I would ask that you take a vote next week because we have a potential interest from another party. I have not received a letter from her yet, but we agree, but we put it out there that people could submit until Friday.
Yes.
So, to let you know that, yes, you do have somebody, you may have more.
Okay.
All right, we will move along then. Uh, under our new business, we have the Extension Service Annual Memorandum of Agreement.
You do, and it is just the annual thing. This gives you, um, this gives you the salary and of the two employees and some contracted services plus, um, their basic budget that, uh, we put into the county budget.
Okay, so we already approved their, um, their, um, county budget or contribution, but this is the agreement between, um, WDU Extension and the County Commission.
Correct, yeah.
So, um, we're need approval on this?
Yes.
Okay, well, at this time, I would like to, um, approve, um, this annual memorandum memorandum of agreement for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2023 for, um, WDU Extension.
And authorize the president's sign.
And authorize the president's sign.
I will say.
It's been properly moved and seconded to authorize the president to sign the annual memorandum of agreement between West Virginia University Cooperative Extension Service and, uh, Preston County, beginning July 1st, 2023. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Or Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
That's what I was looking for.
All right. All right, we will move along. Next up, we have, well, he's not here.
I see Mr. Reed.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's time for, if you'd like.
All right, we'll just go ahead with your report. When he arrives, we'll move it to that.
And I do just have a couple of things today. First, it had been discussed, um, for Kingwood Water Works and their ARPA allocation that they were seeking to do a change of scope in their project, essentially just do a new project because they do have the federal funding, the board clarifier covers. But, um, you see, they did submit a letter, um, giving you their intent to change the project and come before you. That is tentatively set for the, um, April 25th meeting. At this time, they will have specifics for their new request.
Okay.
It looks like general modification, they're just upgrading mod, doing some modifications or clarifiers.
And it's the same amount as, or it looks like, in a different way, it's the same amount that they requested before. So we're just wait for the 25th meeting and get from there.
All right, perfect. All right, what's up next? Let's see.
Yes, um, we did receive a mini grant application form from Bruce and Brandonville Volunteer Fire Department, uh, which is requesting $1,500 for, um, promotion of their Good Neighbor Days. So, I would want to point out that the commission historically has not given the financial contributions for the fire departments, fairs and festivals, Buck Week Festival, Terrell the 4th of July, Good Neighbor Days, Valley District Fair. Essentially, any contributions that you have made in the past have been directly to the departments and, essentially, it kind of dropped away because you supported, uh, the fire levy, which was meant to reduce the need for such fundraisers of the departments.
I'm, I'm reading here.
It just says they're gonna try to increase the number of rides and activities and events at the annual festival. What are the date times? It just says completion dates is 17.
It's right at that weekend. I think it's like the 14th, 15th, 16th.
No, it's.
Of July, it's always the same time of the year.
Same time as 14th, usually. I mean, it is a, I understand what you're saying, Joe, um, that, um, the fire levy supports, um, these fire departments and, I mean, they have, they have the right to put in any kind of mini grant request. And I know with the Sology Center and the Roseburg, um, festivals, that's kind of different because it's supporting the Sology Center.
Yeah, same thing with RDR, they only did.
And the funding, the funding source is much different.
Yes, as you did.
How much, how much is in Hotel Motel, is that allocated for this particular stuff? Cause some of it's art earmarked, arts and rec and stuff like that, so that won't touch.
I believe the arts line before the Roseburg allocation was around $10,000, $1,500. So you've used roughly half of that.
This would, this would come from that.
I don't think so.
Not so much art, um, because.
It's not really arts.
Yeah, none of the RRC events would be considered general carnival style happenings and feature specific themes that are mostly connected to the Sology Center, World War II, Chris Kendall art, um, the arts.
Yeah, cause this is historical and art.
So they would meet the criteria.
I mean, I'm just saying that, so. Most of theirs, you know, remains.
For future references.
Are inside the center.
Yeah.
So for, for future references, would just have to come out of contributions, cold set rent area or something like that.
Yeah, that's what, that's what it seems like, yeah. Could meet the criteria for, um, Hotel Motel stuff. Cause it really doesn't, it's not as, it's not providing historical or arts or anything like that. It's just raw.
That's, that's, I, yeah, I, I understand that.
Um, so.
If we could just maybe do.
Well, I, I don't know, if, if no one wants to make a motion to fund this, then we don't need to take it to a vote. If we don't think it's, you know, proper. One second. If, if, if we don't make the motion, then what I would like to do is at least send a letter thanking them for reaching out for the funding and if they don't.
Yeah.
You know, if our fire don't fund that sort of.
Uh.
Through arts and communities.
Um. I just have a second here to read a little bit more of this. How did they put this in, Joe, just like the end of last week?
Uh, it came a week ago.
It was Tuesday afternoon.
After the meeting.
Yeah, yeah, Tuesday at work.
So I mean, is, so this, I guess it's kind of something we have to decide. Are we gonna just take a stance on not funding festivals in the county?
I, I don't think we ever have.
We never have.
I don't think we ever have, that doesn't mean that they cannot certainly ask for it. Um, we do, however, and have, um, always historically given the fire departments a, a, a small contribution and during, during COVID, we gave much larger contributions and, um, you know, sometimes I guess maybe they could have spent some of that money on certain things or whatever.
I mean, uh, number one could be, I mean, that these festivals, not just the Bruce and one, like, um, the Terrell one, the New Tunnel one that started up, they are the backbones of the community and the Buck Week Festival. It's a, um, huge part of Preston County pride. I understand the County Commission's, um, stance on it previously, but, um, you wanted to promote community, um, involvement and stimulate the community.
I mean, they, they do get advertising through, uh, the CDB. That's on the website and everything, all these different events do. So that's part of what they do.
Like it happens.
Some kind of roundabout way they, we give them. Hotel Motel, yeah, since they go to CDB. And then CDB advertising and stuff, yeah.
And I guess in the grand scheme of things, each of these organizations could reach out to the Tower County Foundation.
Mm-hmm. They can, they can, and some places they have before. I know Arthur Dale has, he has.
Okay, well.
The schools do sometimes, yeah, they do.
I'm just gonna do it this way, you know, this way we can settle with. Um, at this time, I would like to move to approve, um, um, the Bruce and Brandonville Volunteer Fire Department's request for, um, $1,500 in funding for Good Neighbor Days to be, um, paid for out of contributions.
Right, motion has died for half a second.
Okay.
We'll move on, thank you, that's proper procedure, thank you.
So that determines how we stand on festivals.
Right now, yes.
Yeah. That's what, that's what I'm gonna do.
Ever come to the point where we have enough money and competition and stuff? We're gonna always reconsider, but we don't really have that at this time. The problem.
All right, um, let's see, we're gonna move along.
And, oh, I guess, because it's still need and under miscellaneous correspondence received and.
Uh, thank you letters.
Okay.
It actually was a full card.
Oh, well, I figured you'd make a photocopy or something, so.
Oh, thank you. So, uh, we did receive a thank you letter, um, and I, I was reached out to by a gentleman of the Maple Springs, um, asking, you know, if he wanted pictures or presentation. I think it's always a good thing when the County Commission, uh, is, um, able to fund certain projects for different things around the county, uh, just to come back and touch base and give us a status update on the project being completed and, and whatnot, so that the, the county can see how much dollars sometimes are spent. But, um, from, this is to the commission, it says, "We surely want to send our grateful thanks for the financial support we sent our way to the purchase of the generator that was needed to make Maple Springs Church Family Life Center a fully equipped shelter for union district in the time of emergency. This generator is fully installed and up and running if need be. It is a model that instantly kicks in when the power shuts down. We plan to send some pictures your way in the near future. Again, our gracious thanks, Maple Springs Community Life Center, Krista Hayes." And I would like to add to that, that, um, you know, people are not always going to agree one way or the other, how we fit to do things or, or whatever. But, um, one thing that was really kind of cool was I had a gentleman approach me that said, um, I really didn't agree with, with that contribution. And, um, so it just took a second. Uh, you know, it's impossible on a small newspaper to get every detail of everything we talk about in these meetings. But I was able to take the time and explain to him why the commission was led to fund that project and it was because it is an election center during our elections. And when they lose power, OEM only has so many generators to go around to keep the election process running smooth. So, not that we, uh, would discount anybody for asking, but it's, it was important for us for that one because it also does serve the citizens, uh, during the election processes, which is one thing that the commission is tasked to do by code, is make sure that people let this go on off without a hitch. So, you know, it was nice to be able to talk one online with somebody and then certainly change their mind.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, but Maple Springs actually did have an issue directly with elections.
Superstanzing that thing?
Yes, so I'm sure there's a, a lot of people.
That's when they, they saw it, they, some different elections. Uh, the election sites were probably running to get to.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Joe. All right, we're gonna, uh, backtrack here just a little bit. We have our facilities manager, Mr. Joe LaRue, and he's got a couple of reports uh, on some work that has been happening at our maintenance department.
Good morning, Commissioner. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning, Joe.
Really quickly, uh, a quick update of hand handle. As Commissioner Spence said, hand handle is coming back today at 2:00 and they are going to bring electricians, plumbers, and HVAC people and they're gonna assess all of the systems. It's just great, you know, the commissioners asked for and now today we will have professionals outside of us to come and take a unobstructed view of it the way it is and advise the commission on how to do it. So today at 2:00, all those folks will come and will have a very busy time, I'm sure. You know, ultimately, we want the sheriff's office to be put back and be put back right. And that way we'll have an independent review of the, of the systems to see what can be used and what can't be used. I think now we're all in agreement, anything that can be used to save money that is a hundred percent up to code, we don't wanna, you know, we don't wanna discard that. You know, if something is a hundred percent up to code and can be reused, we definitely wanna save the county and the citizens money. So we will have that, uh, today. Also, in the county's buildings, we are going to start tomorrow on the family court in the basement of the courthouse and do a small remodel slash upgrade. So I'll meet with, uh, Judge Myer today at noon in his recess. We met with Judge Heald last week during her recess, one day, Tuesday, I think, or Wednesday. And so everybody's very happy to have the upgrade. Of course, uh, there was a grant applied for and the county received to pay for all these, uh, much needed upgrades. So we will get that done and close out the grant. Uh, it will definitely be done in April, so we will close out the grant and the remodeling will be done. Also, as you all may saw at the courthouse, while we're at the courthouse, Keystone Waterproofing is doing an amazing job. They will be done with Route 7 side today. They're the last and final step on each side, putting the sewer on and of course cleaning problems windows, so they will get that done today. On the annex of SDI, the, uh, people we have got to test the air quality and the accessory departments have not got us back our update yet. And I do apologize, they are, like all of us, they're very busy and I'm sure that this week they will have that report for you all. So we are awaiting Ms. Cummings' report on her air quality. On the, uh, other buildings, you can see that, uh, spring is sprung. We did hold off till yesterday to start the plumbing and everything and everything's coming along really nicely. So we're getting, we, we did a courthouse on first, of course, so it looks nice. And I think it looked very nice for the spring. And so we are just moving through all the projects and all the orders as they come in.
Yeah. So. Thank you, Joe. Anthony, can I add a couple?
Absolutely.
Um, so, um, one thing I did wanna run by the commissioners is me and Joe were the ones that ended up being over there for, um, when the hand handle rebuild guys came and it just happened to be the ones around. Um, that email was sent out, if you guys disagree with any of this stuff, and that was kind of guided by everyone, no and stuff, just let us know. Then we went, we went ahead and put bulletproof windows in there just because I thought our OEM 911 center has bulletproof windows. That's something if we're redoing the sheriff's office right now, that's definitely something I thought and, um, MoPret thought that we should add on there because, I mean, the sheriff's office is complete windows.
Okay. Um, one thing that I, and I could have misinterpreted the email. I mean, it's still very, uh, even though it's detailed, it's still very open and vague as to what's on it after the assessment. Um, but one thing I would like to, me personally. um, although when we're down this far and, and things are being looked at to potentially be upgraded or redone, um, I would like to see upgrades redone, but only if things must be upgraded. I can't see pulling out good stuff if there's not a problem with it.
Right, so that's what.
Yeah, so that's in a good assessment.
That's what we were kind of looking at is the wiring, a lot of the wiring, by looking at it, just means removed and, um,
It's old.
Updated, but there is some new stuff in the, the upstairs, so we were looking at keeping that. And then the plumbing, I think we mainly decided on a whole new plumbing system because it's not much and Joe, you probably know better than me, it's in.
There's a part, there's very little plumbing issues upstairs, bathroom.
And what's in there is the old gallon on it.
No, we're not talking, no.
And old, uh, cast iron.
Trying to talk, trying to figure the HVACC and the, uh, heating outs where they don't have to use propane or baseboard heat, so more efficient at heating and cooling. And that may include the current system.
So now Commissioner Thomas reminded me last week, uh, at, on the sheriff's office update, we had Panhandle come back, just the remediation part. And there was concerns over that there was still mold in the sheriff's office. I apologize commissioners for not updating on this during this meeting. So it turns out that the light fixture in question was not, when we took it down, uh, Tim Capes from Panhandle was here. We took it down, it was not green or black, it was just mud.
It was dirt, yeah, you told me, you told me it was just dirt in there.
So also, uh, we was trying to find mold in the rest of the structure. They had questions on the holding cell and the jailhouse part and we did not find any mold anywhere. And in fact, maybe in between, uh, needed clean and maybe that might have caused a, you know, some sort of different smell. But their date in fact, nor the sheriff and his staff or Robin, our amazing custodian, nobody had found any type of mold this week during that inspection. Uh, and we have the light fixture, we saved it. If anybody wants to examine it or in any way, we saved that light fixture that was in question.
I think there was just a misunderstanding and I think initially when, um, the building was cleaned by the initial company, maybe there wasn't, um, there wasn't as a, um, as much of a thorough job as there should have been.
So, so of course, of course, they will come back and they will clean in between the cells and they will clean the very upper highest act just on out of abundance of caution to make sure that that was properly cleaned.
Okay.
So, so, so that all turned out very well for everybody, you know? And it's always, you know, it's always important to be, you know, sure, you know, to be, make sure that the, the staff and inmates and everybody are a hundred percent good shape.
All we're in, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Um.
Um, all right, um, we have nothing else under our county coordinator's report, our facilities manager, um, report. We do have, I do have a stack of bills that, uh, I need to sign here and I would like to get those done because we need to do an executive session that, um, as a matter of result, I believe in any action, I'm not sure at this point, but I don't believe, um, so let's just, uh.
You have any second time?
Well, let's, um, just take a brief recess to let me get this huge stack of bills signed so that he can move along. So we're gonna go to recess approximately ten minutes and, um, then we'll come, come back and move along with what else we need to do, so.
Okay, that's fine, because you have like a, um, under page.
I need to tell him something, if I could, since you're in quick.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.